We'll call the, the, uh, regular schedule or the planning, planning session of the Garfield Township Planning Commission to order. First item of business is pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, it'll see the end today, so what are you guys gonna take role?
Yes, Agostinelli?
Here.
Klein?
Here.
DeGud?
Here.
Fudge?
Here.
Racine is absent and excused. Robertson?
Here.
McManus?
Here.
All right, so the next first item tonight is public comment. We have public comment at the beginning and at the end of the meetings. We do not have any public hearings tonight, so if any member of the public would like to come forward and speak, now's the time to do that. And I don't see our public running toward the, the microphone, so we'll close public comment and move on to repeat, review and approval of the agenda. So if you have anything, items on here which would create a conflict of interest, now'd be the time to identify that.
I'll make a motion, we approve the agenda.
Support.
Motion made and supported to approve the agenda as presented. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Uh, next item is our minutes from our July 12th, uh, regular meeting. They're in your packet. If anybody has any comments or corrections they'd like to note, now'd be the time to do that.
Make a motion, we approve the minutes.
Support. Motion made and supported to approve the minutes from the July 12th, 2023 regular meeting. Any further discussion on that? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Correspondence? I don't see any on our desk tonight, John, anything?
No, no correspondence.
Okay. Reports. Molly, anything from the town board?
No meeting this week.
Okay, no meeting. All right, planning commissioners, uh, Bob, anything from ZVA?
Nope, no meeting.
No meeting?
Nothing from Parks and Recreation.
Hey geez, we got joint planning, we actually had a meeting last week and, uh, and for the first time I think ever we're gonna have a special meeting coming up in August. They actually, uh, it's kind of fascinating, uh, the, they wanna rebuild the, what do they call that? The central admissions?
Call it central receiving. It's basically in building 50 there where you have the main entrance, restore the main entrance, which right now is that flat, like 1950s style building, but actually restore it so it used to be as, uh...
Yeah, should've brought the packet, but there was a, really, they had nice pictures of the old, the original building matched the decor and everything. So they wanna tear that down and re, or rebuild it. I don't think they're gonna tear that one down or build over it, but rebuild it and match. And the reason that we need to do, address it is to, to address the, the heights, because that has a flat roof with a, some, some false peaks to it. So, uh, they wanna have it match the old height, so we have to, uh, have a, an amendment to the zoning ordinance there that would allow that building to be a little higher and then match the roof lines of the old, original building, if that's kind of a simple way to look at it.
Right, and so the, uh, there is a provision, so obviously this portion of the commons is within the city of Traverse City, and so that charter provisions regarding building height still pertains to this part of the, uh, Grand Traverse Commons. Uh, but there is a provision apparently in there that recognizes existing buildings. So, uh, building 50 does have portions of it that go up to, I think about seventy-two and a half feet. So, uh, changing the, uh, building height definition and how it's measured specifically for this district. In the, in the development regulations for the commons, there are sub-districts. And the amendments would only pertain to this one sub-district, which is essentially building 50. So, uh, they would be essentially matching the existing building height of, uh, building 50 so that it looks and blends in and goes back, uh, to, and towers and like the cupolas and so forth are apparently, uh, accepted from that requirement. So, they could create back, it almost looks kind of like a bell tower or something like that as a central part of it.
So it will not have to go to a vote of the people?
No. Hasn't been determined yet, but that's their initial evaluations and so forth, so.
And then, if I recall from pictures, wasn't that central portion actually a story taller than the adjacent wings?
It was, but the roof line wasn't, because it didn't have the peak roof, it had a flat roof.
It had a mansard roof.
A mansard.
Oh. So the mansard will, it, it was slightly taller, I think it was actually seventy-four and, seventy-four, if I remember the description that we were presented with last week. So it'll still, it'll be, match that seventy-two and a half, so it won't be, but it, yeah, it had a mansard, which is kind of angled and then flat, where the other was a gabled roof. So, but it'll match that peak, the top of the mansard will match the gable peak. So we, cause again, that's why we had to change the way we made building, uh, roof measurements, because on a gable end, you typically only go up half. This would go up to the very highest peak, so it could also match the mansard roof.
But you're right, it actually has a, an extra floor in it, but it's the same height.
And a shipo is gonna let you change back.
That's another good question. So, shippos has a different, uh, historic preservation officer right now. Minervini's in conversation with the prior one, was all about restoring that. Uh, there, and there is a thing in historic preservation of buildings where it can look somewhat similar, but it can't be exact. They don't, they never want you to try to recreate history, but somehow make it, it can, it's gonna be slightly different, but it'll still match, it'll essentially blend in. The nice thing about this is that it would be new construction, so as, you know, one of the challenges, particularly to like building 50, is the way the building is layout. It's got, you know, two-foot thick walls, it's got really wide hallways, but very small rooms. This would allow this potential area in there to be, uh, look and feel, at least on the outside, as, uh, you know, what we see as historic building 50, but the interior could be done and designed in a way that's more contemporary standard.
They're not gonna put two-foot walls back in there?
It's not.
Shipo may require that, so I shouldn't say that.
Did they indicate what, uh, what the use of that space would be?
Uh, they have not.
They didn't, they didn't divulge that, but they, uh, it was, it, it would, when you really, I never really paid a lot of attention to it, but when you actually saw the current photo and then the historic photos, like wow, that really looked a lot nice. Why they ever tore that down and built that flat top thing there?
Didn't it burn?
Uh, they didn't, no, I think they just, they just tore it down.
I think it was just, uh, probably for better efficient layout of the offices based at that time, for whatever reason.
It was not a long time ago, but, so, uh, but they, you know, so the first step is we need to approve the language and get it changed. Then they can, they can address the shipo things, they can address if the city residents have to, uh, deal with it or not, but, so. Little action in the joint planning commission for change. All right, next staff report, anything from staff?
Uh, I do have, uh, one item. Uh, we, if you recall, several months ago, actually, I think it was last year, you approved a site plan for thirty-five sixty-six North, U.S. thirty-one South. Uh, this was the location, a couple, it kind of rate, it's about two doors down of McDonald's there, Frankie Road. There's McDonald's and then there was the Well Now, uh, site plan, and then right below that was a, I think it was a four unit or a three unit? Three or four unit. Three unit, uh, like commercial building that was gonna have a Chipotle with a drive-in. So, as you call, that was an approved site plan, went through the process. Uh, there were still some of the conditions that hadn't been met, uh, so they hadn't quite got their land use permit, but they were getting very close. And then it became apparent to us that, uh, their purchase agreement is no longer valid with the owner. There was another party that is interested in that property now. Uh, so it's a little awkward, because we have a provision in the ordinance called section one zero eight that says you cannot have more than one application open for a site at any given time. So we instructed the, the new interested property, uh, party that, uh, we don't just have an open application, we have an approved site plan. Uh, we have reached out to ALREG, which was the applicants and the ones that obtained the site plan approval from the planning commission and let them know, uh, that we actually received a communication from the property owner's attorney regarding the, the expiration or the change of the purchase agreement. While that may be the case for them, we have this provision, planning, it has to come back to the planning commission in some form. We are asking ALREG if they can provide a response, uh, whatever they're gonna do, if it's gonna, if they're gonna rescind it or request a rescindment. The, it does have to come back to the planning commission at some point, because you're the approval authority. The approval of the site plan, it runs with the land, it would be appropriate to say this site plan is no longer valid, and if there's a new party, then they'll have to go through any type of review process. So, unresolved, I just wanted to give you a heads up, because it might come back to you in some form, but, um, it's a little unusual.
What was the process we approved that under?
So that was under, uh, Commercial Highway. So in the Commercial Highway District, it's, it's, uh, even though it was a use by right, in the Commercial Highway, site plan review, all site plan review and Commercial Highway has to come to the planning commission. Cause there's design principles, cross-access, access management, that are important standards in there that, that zoning ordinance wants the review of the planning commission.
Yeah, a couple things. I remember when this came up, because this was approved right at the same time we approved the Meyer site plan. And, uh, they, they, we're in the same article, I think, in the ticker or the record eagle. And so there was, a lot of people thought that the Chipotle was going in the Meyer parking lot, because they were kind of in the same article. And we had to say, no, it's across the street, you know, more closer to McDonald's, so. It, it's an interesting, just listening to you talk about that, um, it's kind of an interesting quirk, so to speak. So, uh, an applicant came in, applied for a site plan, and got it approved on property they didn't own. Okay, so now we've got a site plan that's approved, and they never owned the property. So, I mean, it's a little strange, but it's, it's, you know...
So we do, we do allow that, uh, in the ordinance and in the application, so the owner did sign off on the application. There is a provision in that, in the form where they sign off, yeah, we, they have to get some authorization.
Can't just come in and, you know, save plan on property, you don't have some sort of control or claim to.
If they're, and it, and that's very common, and a lot of them, particularly those types of developments, they have a purchase option, some type of agreement in place, they get authorization to go get their approvals, in this case they did. But for whatever reason, there was a, a breakdown in that agreement. And, uh, we're just trying to rectify it in a way so that we have proper record of it, of, uh, because that was not a plan that was approved by staff, that was approved by the planning commission. So somehow there needs to be some resolution to it, and unfortunately, it's odd enough where, you know, the ordinance just not, not anticipated.
Doesn't happen all the time. I don't know, but I can't remember it ever happening, by the time I've been on the board, so.
Question, can this new buyer use what's approved? Can the new buyer?
Uh, they could, potentially, yeah, they could.
Do you have to get permission from the other applicant?
Correct.
The one that lost out?
But I don't think that's what, what the, the new interested party wants to use the building that's there. So they have a completely different type of use planned for that area. Actually, it's a special use permit, uh, application. So it's a completely different situation. It's not another commercial kind of entity, love that. We're just trying to figure it out from the standpoint of, uh, for records and how approvals typically go, cause they usually, it's, it's the site plan is running with the land, it's approval for that property. It's not, it's not tied necessarily to the applicant. So if they did have an application and they hadn't even submitted a site plan, that'd be one thing, but because there's actually a approved plan by the planning commission, it makes it a little bit more complicated.
Chipotle was gonna tear down the existing building?
Correct.
Which the, the new applicant wants to re, repurpose?
Yes.
Is it a secret, the new applicant? I mean, I actually know who it is.
Uh, well, we haven't received any application at this, we've only had discussions, so till we get, it's not necessarily of... Public record, till we get an app, actual application, we don't have any file on it, so to say. Yeah.
Interesting.
So just wanted to alert you of that. I know there's nothing for you to do this evening in that regard, but just wanted to keep you apprised should that, uh, come back at some point here in the future. Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
All right.
All right, next item is num, number six, is unfinished business. Uh, item A is, uh, planning department twenty twenty-three dash eight seven, zoning ordinance R two, R three, zoning district potential changes.
Yeah, so in your, uh, report, or excuse me, in your agenda packet, is a report, uh, that we have that covers, uh, some ideas for some potential changes to the R two and R three districts. So the R two district is our one and two family, uh, district. It's basically, it does allow, uh, single-family homes, but the big part of it is that it's really geared towards allowing duplexes. Uh, also the R three, which is the multi-family residential district, so anything, three units or greater is considered multi-family in the ordinance. So there was some issues here that we just wanted to kind of, uh, make you aware. I, I kind of talked a little bit about those at the, uh, meeting, uh, previously about this. But this is just kind of, uh, really doing a little bit of analysis. I, there was, uh, a few stories I, uh, provided at the last time that we reviewed this, and I just kind of put those in here in terms of, we use some examples of the, uh, development along Boone Street, on the south side of Boone Street, between Barlow and Garfield, where we have some existing, uh, single-family dwellings that are on sixty-five wide lots and some existing duplexes on seventy-five foot wide lots. So they are in some places, uh, and I only mention that as just examples where we, we can get some of these units on smaller lots, particularly where water and sewer is provided. I mentioned, uh, Linden Street is one example of an area. Uh, it's part of the Leewall Terrace subdivision, so it's not just that particular street, but that, just one area, just kind of pointed out that, uh, there's some existing single-family dwellings on seventy-foot wide lots. Uh, that's an area zoned for R three, so it does allow for multi-family, but, uh, even duplexes are not even permitted in there, because you would need a hundred and forty feet wide, based on our current ordinance. So even though zoned R three, you can only pretty much do single-family homes in that particular area. And then just the comparison between Aspen Pines, which was approved back in twenty eighteen and has, has been constructed and completed, uh, is a place in, that's zoned R three, where they have a two-hundred-foot wide lot, and we're able to get eight apartments in that particular, uh, location. But then when you have a similar situation where you have a parcel that's vacant, zoned R three, this one's on South Airport Road near Sam's Club, it's not zoned yet, it's, uh, it's zoned agriculture, but the master plan supports a rezoning to R three. But if it was rezoned to R three, because that lot, even though it's larger in area, because its lot width is only a hundred and forty-eight feet, uh, you could only put a duplex versus the eight units. So the discussion is looking at, uh, focusing on lot width, in particularly. Uh, I did provide there some other communities, Traverse City and East Bay Township, in terms of, uh, similar districts, R two, R three, or in the case of East Bay, moderate density residential and high-density residential. And just to illustrate, uh, minimum lot widths and lot areas. And obviously the city is, has got something where they provide, uh, some very narrow lots and some very small lot areas. And I'm not suggesting we go in that direction, but does, does show that it is feasible in some cases to provide for that. Uh, in the case of East Bay Township, they do a flat minimum lot width for the duplexes of eighty feet with water and sewer, and that's primarily what we're looking at. Uh, I'm not thinking we're looking more in areas without, but primarily in those areas where we do have water and sewer service, where you could go down to, uh, a narrower lot. Uh, same thing with their multi-family now. Uh, theirs is a flat width on the lot of sixty feet with water and sewer. Uh, theirs is a, uh, their density's a little bit lower, because we have a four thousand square foot, uh, per unit lot area. Uh, theirs starts out at fifty-five hundred square feet for the first unit, and then forty-eight hundred square feet for each additional unit. But nonetheless, they kind of went, uh, with this, uh, kind of flat, uh, number in terms of the lot width. In our ordinance, um, there's this kind of scale to it as well. So what we're showing here is, um, if you look at the R two as it is currently, and I just highlighted in yellow, uh, one of the things that is, uh, triggers a duplex to be a very wide parcel is that, on that top of, uh, page three dash two, under E, there says dimensional standards, it's per dwelling unit. So when we look at lot widths, a single-family is currently eighty feet. Uh, two-family is, uh, seventy-five feet. Uh, but that's with, that would be considered per dwelling unit, which a duplex would be two dwelling units, so it'd be double that amount. What we're kind of grafting there is just kind of going, uh, a flat number, really a minimum lot area being the same as a two-family being as a one-family. Uh, also recognize that sometimes you can stack duplexes, they do not have to be side by side, they can go one above the other. Also remember that this is the R two district, this is not the R one, this wouldn't be applied in R one areas. This is the R two district, which we have in very limited places, and typically in areas that we do have water, sewer service, and we are expecting to have kind of a higher density area. And then the lot widths, uh, by removing that per dwelling unit requirement would be, be a flat number of seventy feet. Uh, we thought a seventy feet would be possible in potentially some areas. Uh, and then same thing with the, um, minimum lot width for the one-family is dropping that down to sixty-five. So recognizing that we do have areas in the township that are at that rate now. One of the areas that we did also on that page is just adjust the minimum yard setback, it's kind of a minor item. We thought the one-family could match the two-family at twenty-five feet. So that's kind of it for the R two, on what your thoughts are, at least for this particular district.
So on a two-family with a public sewer, in the past, it was twenty thousand square foot for two, for a two-family, for a duplex, and now you're gonna drop it down to twelve thousand?
Correct.
So you're gonna make, you think in twelve thousand, so you're dropping almost in half?
Well, you have to remember that's, we're having sewer in this particular case, and then also there are other dimensional requirements they'll still have to meet, the set, yeah, the, the set, setbacks and so forth, there's lot coverage requirements, there's building cross-section and so forth.
But, but you're still, that's, so that'd be six thousand per, uh, per unit?
Correct.
And that, and you're at four thousand on a multi-family, so we're still...
Above that.
Half again, so I, I guess that, that seems to, the way I'm thinking, it's, looks like...
Yeah, but you're right, like right now you would need, uh, twenty thousand square feet for a duplex, which is, you know, almost half an acre, with sewer.
Right.
So.
But don't most of our, our duplex areas have sewer anyway, don't they?
Correct. Yeah, and it, that would be, I mean, that's typically, I don't think we would really apply it. Um, I mean, there is one area I know, uh, Harris Hills, which we rezoned for R two, has not been developed.
But that's got sewer?
Yes, well, it doesn't, not on it, but it has access to sewer. But that's anticipation that most likely that will. I mean, I can't see that anybody would develop that without, that would not make any sense. But no, you're right, they, mostly of our, our two areas, uh, provide, are provided with sewer.
There's that big parcel on, on the highway that we talked about a couple weeks ago, that, that is R two, that does not have a sewer, but...
Not a lot of R two out there, is there?
No. No, there really isn't.
What's that piece in the middle, is that?
On Silver Lake Road?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's... Oh yeah, that is a vacant parcel there, we've talked about that one before.
That kind of crossing the YMCA in there somewhere?
Yeah, just up the street from that, kind of, uh... Yeah, I'm not sure of the whole story on that one, but that's prob, that is, I think there might be a single-family home on there, but I think it's vacant, the remainder of it.
It looks fine to me, then.
Yeah, commissioners have any comments about that? Looks good. I mean, to me, it's making, easing the, easing the requirements, maybe that's gonna help us get some more stuff built, you know, so.
It certainly would be, in some of our areas, we think it's a viable, you know, I'm not saying that, you know, we see a lot of interest in duplexes these days, but it could, you know, easing these up, that could provide it. Probably the more important, uh, one is in the R three, because we do have areas where we've had requests, uh, in the case of the area off of Barlow, in particular, we've had several requests where people wanted to put duplexes and we're not able to do so. So we basically carry the same standards forward. So R two, really, I mean, if you, if you're kind of like where R one is gonna be your bigger lots and, uh, lowest density, R two may be a little bit higher, so R three is gonna be our highest density area. Uh, to us, it didn't make any sense why there would be any difference between R two and R three, uh, in terms of both the one-family and the two-family, uh, housing. Obviously, the multi-family is the big one in this particular case. Uh, this is where you're adding in the potential to have higher density residential. So we struck, uh, struck the per dwelling unit, uh, at the heading, ten thousand square feet, which is one family. Um, we did ten thousand square feet for the duplex or two-family. We did add in the, the per dwelling unit for the four thousand square feet, cause that's our way of measuring density. Uh, so that basically, uh, is, is a factor that we wanna keep in, in that particular place. The multi, uh, excuse me, the minimum lot width for those is carried over. It's the same as what we're proposing for the R two, for both one-family with or without public sewer and two-family with or without public sewer. The multi-family is the one that we've gone away from, this method of, um, where it's basically, you have to have, uh, at least a hundred and forty square feet or, uh, a lot width of a hundred and forty feet for the two units, and then additional, uh, feet for each additional unit with a max of two fifty. It's kind of hard to read through that strike-through language there, but we thought a flat one hundred feet is something that could work. Uh, and that could actually work in some of our areas in, uh, some of those neighborhoods.
So you expect that these changes, you're aware of some lots that are out there right now, that this could, uh, pull out the stops, and we could see this go to immediately, soon, to some additional housing in the community?
Yeah, we believe so, yes.
Cool, I think it's great.
Yeah.
Especially ones where it was like that different shape, um, like that example on, uh, was that on South Airport? Um, where it's like, compared to one of the ones over on, uh, Barlow, it's a larger parcel, but because it's narrower, it was limited by this, even though it like, it meets the one standard better, but it didn't meet this one. So it was kind of these two pointing in opposite directions.
Yeah, when, and that's, I mean, lot width is one component of this, and like I said, there's other things such as setback requirements, lot coverage, building cross-section, so forth, that, of these other types of standards that we have in the ordinance that will also govern how the site is, is ultimately developed.
So then the next action you guys would take is to actually start to prepare a, uh, an official ordinance revision?
Correct.
Based on this information?
Correct.
Well, I would support that.
May I ask, have any questions or comments? Looks good to me, I mean, I think we've, we've talked about the, about this, it's good movement, I think. No action required, you're just kind of feeling us out on what we wanna...
Yeah, just, uh, like, we'll come back with more formal language at that point, and then so you'll have another look at it, so this gives you some time to think about it, but...
You're gonna do one, two, and three at the same time?
One and two.
What?
Two and three.
Two and three.
R two and R three.
We're not touching on R one.
Not R one, yep.
That's what I wanna make sure.
Yeah.
Yeah, but we do R two and R three together, yeah.
Okay.
Were there other changes you'd do at the same time? Did we have other, something else that we wanted to change in?
Uh, we'll take a look, I don't know if we hit anything...
I mean, there's, there's always stuff on the list.
We have a ongoing list of little tweaks for the ordinance, I didn't know, um...
Yeah.
We were kind of, we weren't really wanting to go down this route of doing a zoning ordinance amendment right now, because we're kind of focused on the master plan, but this one we thought was, would be really helpful to get out there, at least to open it up, uh, in light of the housing needs, and not say this is gonna trigger a lot of development, but anything else, any little thing helps. So we thought that this could be something we could do right now, but we can take a look if there's some other tweaks that we think might be along with this as well. Okay.
All right, sounds good, thank you. Uh, item B, master plan update, the pop-up... Item B, master plan update, the pop-up event recap.
Let me have Steve cover this here.
All right, thank you, John. So, we, on, uh, July fifteenth, so Saturday, a couple Saturdays ago, uh, we were over at Silver Lake Rec Area by the dog park, we did our pop-up event, uh, we were there from ten to one. Uh, we did it as a visual preference survey, we just had some boards available, uh, tried to get some, uh, thoughts from folks, uh, and just also increase awareness of, to the community that we're doing a master planning process, uh, and if there's any other feedback. Um, we, when we were discussing this with planning commission, we were thinking Silver Lake Township, Beautiful Park, it's a gem for our community. It's interesting, when we, uh, started talking to people and reaching out, uh, we asked that, we usually ask that, are you a resident of Garfield? We talked to a total of twenty-three people, uh, five were from Garfield. Which actually just, if nothing else, uh, showed us that, uh, the park is well-loved throughout the community, not just Garfield residents, which is, I think, a good thing, but, um, uh, good to note that, yeah, we had a lot of Blair and Long Lake, um, few scattered throughout. Some, uh, visitors, we put, uh, Wisconsin, Ohio, and Seattle, Washington, we had some visitors, um, who were there at the park. I don't know if they were people who were, had grown up here, had family here, but, uh, uh, so a lot, at that point, we just said, oh, thank you, we, uh, we're, uh, staff for Garfield Township, but, uh, we were able to, uh, have some good kind of in-depth conversations, uh, with, uh, five people from Garfield, uh, including Kara, who's here, uh, thank you for spreading awareness of the pop-up event. So, we just had, uh, kind of some gathered, uh, comments, uh, from that, and a few areas, uh, topic areas, housing, so... We, we've heard a lot ADUs in, in, uh, kind of multiple facets, we've talked about, we actually went back to the, uh, random sample community survey. That's, uh, one of the things that I guess kind of kicked this off was, uh, it did, in that one, it did say, uh, we had the question, like, should Garfield permit ADUs, and that seemed to be some general support. Now, they didn't have a lot of detail on that, other than just the words, we should permit them. Uh, but like, kind of diving into details, as we've seen in the planning commission discussions. Uh, some residents were worried, uh, about ADUs becoming short-term rentals, and whether they're permitted or not, if that just starts to become an enforcement, uh, challenge, so... I think it's one where, if we ever did anything, there would, uh, probably have to be some strong parameters on how we would do it, but, um, that was something that was vocalized, um, but, uh, people were supportive of, uh, more affordable housing options. Some people actually asked about ADA, uh, accessibility requirements as well. Some people were talking about property maintenance, uh, which may not be a master plan-specific thing, but everyone's also, uh, available to comment on ongoing property maintenance issues that they're seeing around the township. People talked about filling in, uh, empty buildings before constructing new buildings, in terms of developments, and getting out some of the infill development. There was some, uh, split on the Boardman River Crossing, that was one of the photos we showed. And some kind of focusing on transit, um, instead of, uh, adding a bridge, uh, concerned about other, some environmental things. One person, uh, was very, uh, passionate about, uh, renewable energy, kind of was pointing us to some different resources and that, but, uh, was asking about that. And actually, one of the random ones, 'cause we were at, uh, the park, was a shade canopy at the dog park. Uh, it, uh, I can't remember, was it, like, there was, it was like partially cloudy that day, if I remember. So, we had some cloud, but it, there was some times it was, uh, getting hot by the end of it, so... Uh, and we had a canopy, 'cause we had our tent, but, um, yeah, shade canopies, uh, something people like, so... In terms of ki, community engagement going forward, I'm curious what, uh, we were curious what planning commissioners, uh, thought. So, this, we didn't get a lot of folks, uh, which is totally fine, uh, it's good to have in-depth conversations, uh, with some folks, but we thought, uh, what does planning commission think about, uh, trying this in a different place, uh, do we try to hold off on this? Maybe try some other, uh, community engagement strategies, we actually even mentioned, uh, as we can, keep having regular meetings throughout the year, not just the study session, but where we have public hearings, uh, when we're doing our staff report, just make a master plan announcement. And say, we are going through a master plan update process, we have our study sessions, we have our website, we, contact us if you have comments about it, here's materials that are available, just to even spread awareness at that point, but, um, if, uh, if we want to try this again, uh, would that be worth it, is there something else we should do? Is there something we could do differently on this, uh, or did we just luck out on, uh, a particular Saturday, um, and who was there? Uh, the other thing with community engagement was, uh, since it's getting close to the start of school season, uh, school season, school year, um, to reach it...
It's not August yet.
Yeah. Have you been to a store lately, it's back to school season, yeah.
I've got two kids who are gonna tell me it's just July, Dad.
Yeah.
We're not talking about school yet.
And Halloween displays are up.
Yeah. Yeah, that's pretty nuts.
Yeah.
Crazy. Well, it's interesting, you... Um, no, thanks for doing this, I mean, even, even as small as the pool is, that, one thing I just learned reading the comments is, everybody's got an agenda item, I think, okay? Uh, you know, somebody, you know, somebody's worried about weeds on, on unmoated residential lots, you know, uh, that's, that's interesting that they focus on that item. That's, it seems a little, uh, a little, you know, pretty, pretty specific, or, or the, uh, you know, the, the Boardman Crossing you'd expect to be split, and that's, that's fine. I, I'm curious if you did the survey after they've dealt with the traffic, since Chum's Corner's been shut down for a week, whether they feel differently about another route across the river, try to go down Eighth Street, try to go down South Airport. Right now, it's, it's unbelievable, because you lose one of your river crossings, and it's just, it's a bottleneck, you know, so... I'd be curious to, to, uh, you know, have the same survey with people that are sitting in traffic, and ask them that same question, and see what your support level is, but... It, it's pretty interesting that there's some really specific items that are mentioned in here, so... For as few people as, you know, solar panels and alternative energy, I mean, it's, it's, in ADA accessibility for apartments, I mean, those are things I would have expected people to be asking about. What are, what are your thoughts on a, 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 a next event, what, you know?
So, yeah, I think we were thinking, unless there's some, uh, a location, I mean, we could try going back there again, I don't know if we would really get any greater participation or anything like that. Um, we thought, kind of kicked around different locations, we thought maybe like Oriana West, up there on the Buffalo Ridge Plaza, but we're like, it's kind of hard, uh, if we were tying it more towards some events where people are gathered, that might work, but we haven't really identified any of those, so...
Garfield Days.
Garfield Days.
So, we, we need to invent Garfield Days.
Yeah. But, uh, I think at this point, we're probably, unless something comes to us that we think, oh, that would be good to be, uh, 'cause I still think there's just, it's good to engage and, and you have some, you know, part of this is just to, uh, promote the awareness that we are going through a master plan process, but I would say, no, unless something comes up. You know, or we find, oh, that would be a great spot, we could, we could plug in there, we have the materials, it wouldn't take us long to, to put it all together, or whatever. One thing we did, like, what Steve mentioned, we thought about reaching out to TCAPS, and, you know, you do see a lot of, not a lot, but from time to time, you see students in, in coming to some of our, uh, public meetings here, I've seen them in other communities as well, uh, as part of their civics courses that they have to go through in high school. We thought maybe reaching out to TCAPS, and see if, uh, we could provide a survey for students, high school students, uh, maybe as part of TC West. I worked at a, with a previous community, much smaller community, but did a, a survey of two high schools, smaller high schools, 'cause they're a rural community. Uh, and did provide a, worked with a couple of the teachers, uh, on providing a survey for their students in that, in their civics classes. And, uh, with basically understanding that it's an opportunity for us, uh, we, as adults, tend to be more settled in to where we're living at, uh, might be short-term, but it's, for the most part, we're settled in because we're working and so forth, but as younger people, they are at that point of transition, they're, they're living where they're living because their parents are there. At some point, they're gonna go off into the world, whether they go off to college, or wherever, uh, serve in the military, whatever, they're gonna, at some point, come back here, or maybe not. It's an opportunity to give their perspective, uh, really to kind of look, uh, currently how, what do they think of the community that they live in? What are some of the good things, what are the, some of the things that are, are not so good, that they don't like? But then also to see, you know, what would, where do they see their future, do they see them coming back, uh, staying here in the community? Maybe they, their family operates a business here, so they're not gonna leave, or, or whatever, but kind of maybe get their perspective, it's a little bit more flexible and unknown, but gives us such a good opportunity of kind of, to see what they're thinking. A little bit of the challenge would be, is that, uh, to understand that, that the responses to those surveys are gonna be pretty broad. There's no way that we could, I mean, short of maybe asking them where their street address is, to, to discern whether they're Garfield residents or not. It, and I think in this type of survey, isn't necessarily that important, uh, because they could be future Garfield residents. If we know, let's say, you know, maybe they're going to Traverse City West right now, and they graduate in twenty twenty-four, and they go off, and they could come back to this community, and they may locate in our community, uh, you know, to be close back to their original family, or whatever. But I think it does give us a sense of some really, a really good opportunities to kind of get their perspective. And we just, we're just still kind of kicking this around, we were just thinking about it this afternoon, as, as a different way. So, I don't know what your thoughts are on, on doing something like, uh, a high school student survey.
I like the high school student idea, but, you know, you should also do the senior citizens and other, I mean, we can't just take everything from the high school and start saying, oh, well, we need to change this, we need to do that, and other, we need to have a broader spectrum of things that, uh, of people, to give input back. The other thing on this is I wonder about summer, because we have so many visitors, that, you know, I'm seeing, uh, Seattle, Washington, and Wisconsin, Ohio, you know, different places like that, um, where, if it's not June, or July, or August in Traverse City, you're less likely to get, you're still gonna get visitors, but it might be...
Yeah, if we try to pop up event in the fall, more likely to get, or potentially more likely to get local, local and residents.
I, I will say this, I know, like, just talking to, you know, like, the Blair people, Blair doesn't have a dog park, so, and...
So, that's why they come there.
They come right there, it's very close, so if you're living in Goran, or Chum's Corner, you're just, you know, right down the road, so there's that aspect, but... So, and obviously, it, it's location to Long Lake and so forth, so I think there's always gonna be that, that element there to some extent, but, yeah.
I feel like we struggled when you, uh, when you were talking about this event several months ago. We floated around a lot of different ideas, and it's this, th, this was probably one of the best locations where you might hope to get only Garfield residents, and I, I, you know, beyond that, uh, Oriana's gonna be, you know, a fraction, uh, Meyer's gonna be a fraction of the, the customers are just Garfield Township residents. We don't, we have so many people coming into our community to, to do business, um, and we don't have a, I don't know, we just don't have any place... 'Cause there's so much crossover from all the townships, and this is a perfect example. I, I was, I'm actually disappointed for the effort you guys put into it, I'm disappointed for you that...
It's okay.
I, I'm surprised that the number of Garfield Township residents that were there during that time period was so few. Um, I would've thought it would've been more, maybe that was just a chance, or maybe this is exemplary of any place, so I don't think it's a good investment of your time...
Right.
To, to try to find more locations, unless somebody invents Garfield Days, I don't, you know?
Well, even then, you're, you're gonna have people, you know, probably still coming in from outside areas, 'cause they're there, so I, I don't think this is really that unusual. You know, I, I think because of the nature of being in an area, that when you're in an urban area, you do get a lot of people coming, passing through, so I don't think... I think it was worthwhile, because it did give us a unique perspective, at least on the dog park use, uh, in that, or at least at the particular area, and that's the thing, uh, you know, there were other users there, there were people that were renting out some of the pavilions and using the playground, and so we weren't, you know, it wasn't like we were catching all of the users of the park at that time. Uh, so it's a little bit hard unless you're go, actually going up and approaching every single person that's coming in, in and out of the park.
And some, some may have self-selected too, uh, sometimes if you see something, uh, and you don't want to be engaged specifically. We actually noticed, 'cause we set up like right where the sidewalks were in place, and it was like that straight sidewalk back to the dog park. Uh, and a lot of people just walk along the fence of the dog park to actually get into the dog park, they didn't even make it to the sidewalk, so... Uh, I was like, oh, okay, I guess, they probably just start going straight to the dog park.
I kind of like Molly's idea, I, I like the, the school idea.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I mean, if you go back to the survey we did, um, did not, it wasn't the survey, but the survey, the mailing survey.
Yeah.
And it was only sent to a certain number of people, and a very few more, less people responded, so the response wasn't quite what we wanted, but it was decent. But if you, if you did a high school survey, and you're likely to get, you know, if you get it to the teacher that's doing that class, you'd probably get a hundred percent response, and they may make a requirement of the, of the class, you might get better response. But maybe it's an assisted living center, you know, you get both spectrums, you know?
Yeah.
The, the young that's just starting, and, and then the, and then the elderly there, or the people in the assisted living, and see what their view of the community is, and then, and then somewhere in between, it, maybe if the pop-up events aren't as successful as we want it to be, we come up with another way to do a s, some survey, and really get a feel from, from different stages of, of life, so to speak, you know? So, I don't have to be too philosophical about it, but...
I don't know how you capture the twenty-five to fifty-year-olds, because we're all working, you know, I mean...
Bars.
What'd you mention?
Terrafirma.
Go to Terrafirma.
Well, you mentioned, you mentioned, and I, and I, and I almost hate to say this, 'cause it'll seem stereotypical, but the, the, if you go to Oriana, and set up and survey a bunch of people at Oriana, and then the next day you go to Hamples Gun Shop and set up, you're probably gonna see a totally different...
Different group.
Okay, so you don't want to skew your, your answers to a certain, you know, store, or a certain, you know, because it's a different clientele of people, and not, you know, not negative or anything, this is true.
Yeah, we definitely wanted to stay away from Meyer, 'cause it's just such a big magnet, I was there, so we were trying to think of something local, but you're right. And, and again, we're not, the, so we do have the statistically valid survey that was done based on registered boaters. And that was a random sample, and we got significant, we got a very comfortable response with it. So, this is intended to enhance and add to it, it's not, like, we're, we're, we're not at a point where we need, be, I, we feel very comfortable with what the survey that we did, and we've been giving, you know, people opportunities to provide comment. So, we're really not worried about that, but it was just an, an added part to it. I do, I will say, it is interesting to, to talk to the younger people that aren't, you know, adults yet, and just kind of get their perspective, just because I know that it, it, when we look at master plans, and we think, okay, a master plan is looking five, ten, twenty years out, you know, they're looking, you know, kind of their whole lifetime out, so their, their thought process is a lot different than ours, and that, I think that's what we were thinking, is that, uh, as much as they're, at that point, they don't maybe know a lot about the world, they have a lot of hopes and dreams and ideas, and we do know that they are our future generation, and they are our future, you know, potentially residents and caretakers of our community, so... It just kind of gives a little bit, uh, different perspective, so...
I, I think it might be a good idea, just in the, yeah, if you guys wanted to make the investment from a pure civics and education standpoint, to engage those future citizens of our community, um, well, they're citizens now, but, um, uh, but I, you know, and, and maybe the, the actual content is something we take with a grain of salt, in, in the, in the way that it influences, but... What you're just saying, in the sense of just getting their perspective, but I think it's more important to even engage them in the process, um, as, you know, kids being educated in our community. The other thing that just occurs to me is, I, I think from an equity standpoint, um, we've left out all the cat owners. You've interviewed dog owners, but what about the opinions of, uh, cat people?
Hard to reach, 'cause they're probably in their homes.
We don't count those, but, no.
No cat parks.
But, uh...
I thought of something too, and that's... I thought of something too, and that's, and maybe, uh, well, what about, you know, you talk about events, and you, you know, you think about, okay, the fair, okay, or something like that. You know, I, I, I don't discour-, I don't discount like a Blair or Long Lake, okay? Somebody from Blair or Long Lake probably has a fairly similar approach or attitude about things as Garfield. So if somebody from Blair answered some questions, uh, I, I give that more weight than somebody from Seattle, Washington. I hate to say it that way, but what about something like a Home Builders Association show? You know, if you set up a booth at something like that. Now, there's a group of people that are interested in developing and in homes and building or remodeling. You know, there's, there's a whole group of people there that would have a different perspective on things, you know. I don't know if they still have that show out there.
It's in February.
Yeah.
Every year at the Grand Journeys Resort.
Maybe those are some.
We're gonna tell ya tiny lots and.
Well, and maybe so, but, you know, it's, it's, it's a perspective. I mean, and those are the people that are trying to build homes and, and create housing for our, for our future citizens. So we kinda draw from all those, maybe.
February or March, John. We participate every year.
I'm just trying to, you know, unless you go to football games, with east, the West Central Football Game in Tailgate, you know, I mean, you probably get a lot of response in something like that.
You know, actually.
Set up a tent, give out some bras.
Any idea that we've thrown out that we hadn't thought of before? The, um, the Patriot game, when you've got Central and West together, um, or even just a West.
Anytime that West is playing.
Yeah, that might not be a bad place to set up a pop-up.
Hot dogs and, you know, and something like that.
And I, I'm honestly, that's the best location where you're likely to draw a lot of Township residents. Is that a football game?
Okay, that's, that's a really good idea.
Yep.
Well, good, thanks for your efforts, guys. It was, it's, it's, even as short, it was as good, so.
Thank you, yeah, and, and like we were saying, it's, it's all different kinda perspectives, and, uh, as John was saying, that, uh, random sample, and it's random sample and statistically valid, we're actually very happy with the response rate of it. The idea of just doing a lot of different, uh, public engagement is so you get a lot of different perspective, and just give people an opportunity to be heard, 'cause the random sample, to make it statistically valid, not everyone got it. 'Cause we wanted to make sure it was demographically, like, relevant, a microcosm of the whole township. So if people have ideas and wanna, uh, be able to give them to us, uh, just to create different avenues for doing that. And engaging the young people, uh, I would absolutely agree also about, uh, just engaging them in the process, um, and looking more at the visionary long-term, which alludes to, uh, the news article we were reading earlier today. And, uh, the state is trying to figure out, uh, retaining young people throughout the state. This is a statewide, uh, issue, retaining young people, uh, and they're putting together a panel, uh, that currently has an average age of fifty-two. Um, which might be one of the challenges with keeping young people in the state, is, uh, not including enough young people on the panel to keep young people in the state. So if we engage some, uh, locally, I think, uh, that's a good step in the right direction locally, so. But yeah, we'll, we'll be looking at different options, so.
Thank you. All right, well, next item is new business, Planning Department Report twenty twenty-three dash eighty-nine. Master Plan Update, Nodes, Districts, and Corridors.
Hey, um, so right now, we've kind of completed the, uh, different subject chapters within the master plan, at least some of the drafts that we've put together, and now we're kinda moving into, uh, the land use and development patterns and planning for those. And, uh, unfortunately, our projection system is not working right at the moment.
Airtime was down.
So, um, we'd like, we'd love to be able to throw up some maps on the wall here and show you, you know, kind of as, kinda as we walk through these areas. Unfortunately, we don't have that available, so, uh, in the packet is, uh, a map that kinda looks like this. A blueish dominated colored map, uh, with some brown areas. These, this right here is our, uh, is a graph map calling districts and nodes. So districts are basically, uh, larger areas. They're, they can be like neighborhoods, or even larger, they're, uh, areas of, of certain common identity, uh, whether it's the topography, or, uh, the land use pattern, or the road connections, uh, whether it's served by water and sewer, it could be some natural feature, such as, you know, Silver Lake itself. And then there's nodes, which are intended to be more concentrated areas, uh, and those are typically focused around some, could be some type of a, uh, intersection, uh, area, and, uh, usually might have like maybe some type of commercial central, or something of that nature, something that kinda gives a unique, uh, characteristics and identity. Uh, we see these areas as a little bit different than your future land use map. So when you look at our future land use map, you see the whole map of the township covered up in different colored land use designations. So there's things like, uh, what have we got up there? Like, low-density residential, we have agricultural, we have industrial, commercial, and so forth. This is trying to identify areas that are a little bit more unique because of some identifier that brings them together, and trying to create some, uh, specific development guiding principles for that particular area. So what we're gonna do is walk through these areas with you, one by one, and kind of get your thoughts and ideas about these. And you might have nothing, it might be kind of a, a new idea to you. Um, also, we're trying to further define these particular areas, how what you might think might make a natural boundary. But these, uh, by identifying these areas and adding different development principles will help us when we're looking at site plan reviews, when we're doing rezonings, when we're doing different development reviews. Right now, when we look at the master plan for guidance regarding, uh, zoning decisions and so forth, it pretty much is limited to those different designations, and which can be very broad, because they're applying throughout the entire township. These will have guiding principles that are very specific to these very small pieces of geography within the township. So they can be very specific on what do you see in this particular area. So this will be supplementing the future land use map. We're still gonna get to the future land use map after we get through this. Uh, we'll spend probably a little bit more time in that area, but this will be, will work in tandem, uh, with that particular map. This will supplement, uh, decisions that are, you know, made for land use in those particular areas. So what we'd like to do, um, is start with the blue areas and the district areas, and maybe kind of alternate. And this is really just for discussion, I mean, we're not trying to present and get your, you know, if there's things you wanna bring up when you look at these areas, just let us know. This is kinda be intended to be real informal. But we're gonna kinda go one by one through these, and just get your thoughts on these particular areas. And if you know, you know, what your kind of, uh, vision is for that area, or is areas of concern within that, um, or any other thoughts that you might have in terms of the land use development. So we're gonna start off with the Barlow-Garfield area, 'cause this was kind of the, uh, a good part of, it's basically the Barlow-Garfield Neighborhood Plan. So it's that area of Garfield Road, South Airport Road, Barlow Street, in that particular area. And if you look on, um, in the packet, the text that kind of goes with that, uh, starts with, there, there were some different bullet points, and these aren't the, necessarily the guiding principles, but these are just descriptors of that area that, you know, some thoughts and ideas like we have, uh, for that particular area. You may have some additional ones or different changes to these. Uh, continued reinvestment in underutilized commercial properties. So we look at areas like the Cherryland Center, which is kind of at the heart of Barlow-Garfield, and knowing that this is an area that can use additional investment, uh, upgrading some of those commercial properties. We certainly see sidewalks in this area. We've gotten some of those already with some of our redevelopment through that area. Like to have more of those attaching to some of the residential in there. Uh, access management, we really believe that some of the access management, particularly along South Airport Road, uh, right, you know, reduction of driveways, or combining of driveways, coordinating that with the Road Commission, is ultimately gonna provide for better drivability of that whole corridor. Mixed use along Barlow, we think there's opportunity there. We do have some multifamily zoning on the east side. Uh, Barlow west side is mostly industrial. We see that could potentially be a mixed-use corridor of different commercial uses, uh, and industrial uses in there. Uh, we'd also incorporate, we do have some design or development principles and guidelines from the Gar- Barlow-Garfield Neighborhood Plan that we'd like to bring forward into this particular area. It talks about the placement of buildings, uh, you know, connections in terms of walkable areas and so forth. So just kinda wondering what your thoughts are on this area, and what might be specific to this area that you'd like to see happen? If you have anything.
I think we spent a lot of time on this area with the, with the original project, so I think we have a pretty good idea.
Yeah, and we would carry forward the, uh, the bulk of that, just kind of expanding the idea to maybe do these principles in these other districts. But yeah, we would carry forth the, uh, the bulk of that project as it is currently in the master plan.
Yeah, if, if you think that the Barlow-Garfield Neighborhood Plan was a subarea plan within the master plan, we're now incorporating it into the master plan, there will no longer be a separate subarea plan. But it's that same subarea mindset is what we're applying to these other areas. Helps us to kinda tailor some things specific to that. So let's, um.
Some, some more expanded language. I, the continued reinvestment in underutilized commercial property, um, I think that that could be expanded to, to suggest, or give us the opportunity to accept, uh, creative, uh, and, new approaches to redeveloping. I'm, I'm thinking of someone who might feel encouraged by what's in our master plan, um, to, and, and I'm not, I'm not remembering, but, I mean, how many parcels would one have to aggregate in an opportunity to do a PUD, or some kind of redevelopment, um, of some portions of, um, underutilized aspects? And I, and we don't even know what they are, or what those underutilized buildings will be five or ten years from now. But, um, there is a lot of older, um, structures there that maybe somebody could look at. Repurposing and/or tearing down or redeveloping into residential or mixed-use opportunities. It's very close to the city, uh, walkable, rideable, um, right into, you know, tra- downtown Traverse City. And I think that our core industrial, commercial areas are moving out farther away. And so I think that the, I don't know if this is just intended to summarize, and, uh, I think some of what I'm saying I felt like was in the Barlow-Garfield, um, subarea plan. And if that gets rolled into the master plan and is responsive to what I'm saying, then, then I'm good.
Yeah, the, so this, these aren't the actual development principles, these are just some thoughts and ideas we have for this area. But what you're talking about, we, we thought of that particular area and thought the need to create like a mixed-use zoning district. Because the PUD is intended to be this, like, larger approach to thing, and we're thinking we could provide some type of mixed-use zoning specific that's for smaller-scale type of, uh, locations that could accommodate that, it wouldn't be constrained by, well, we can't do it because it's, you know, CG, and we wanna incorporate some type of industrial facility, and with this, that would work out really cool. We're like, well, we can't do it because the zoning doesn't create that flexibility, so. But it, it does need to point to that in here, to say this area would support some mixed-use zoning concepts that could be applied for this area. Good.
Yeah, just a, uh, particularly that area, um, uh, having commercial, uh, that big commercial down Woodmere and Barlow. Is there, uh, is, is that what we wanna see there? Or do we wanna incentivize another way to go? I mean, to me, it makes sense to have residential there, 'cause it's so close to the city, and, uh, so is that something we wanna talk about? Higher density, uh, you know, we wanna make sure that those people that have the commercial there, uh, can get the bang for their buck back when they sell. But, um, is there something that we wanna have happen there that's not happening now?
Right, that's what, we, we've kicked that around a little bit, so your kinda thoughts and ideas would be really good on that, your, your preferences. So certainly like the, the, uh, east side of Barlow is all zoned R3, so that could potentially be a lot more dense residential in that particular area. On the other side, we have, it's, it's mostly zoned IG industrial, and some of those are probably maybe some underutilized properties that maybe could be, uh, higher valued if they were, uh, you know, potentially residential. We, we could see incorporating some residential elements in there, or, you know, going to something even more, uh, you know, full-on residential potentially, or at least giving people that option. There are some challenges in that area, that in terms of some of the existing uses, you know, there's junk yards and some places in, and I would say junk yards, tow yards, I should say.
There's legacy pollution on some of the sites.
Yeah, I mean, we have some, uh, brownfields in there for certain, not to say those can't be managed, but, uh, certainly the pattern and the, the value of that could be a lot higher in, in some regard. So it's something that we're kind of, at least wanna set the stage in the master plan to be open to, uh, in, in that particular area, because it, it could, uh, it could be even, um, you know, a better area than it is now, so.
It's because there's so much residential around it, having somebody go in there with a factory that's a lot of industrial. I'm not sure that's what we want, that, there, if we can help it.
And I don't see it happening, because a lot of the, the, you'd have to assemble a lot of those properties. And, you know, land assembly is a really difficult thing to go through, particularly in an area that, you know, is, is pretty high-valued land. So the likelihood of that is probably not coming, so we should probably be thinking of what are some alternatives to, to take advantage of? Certainly, it's location is what's driving the conversation here, because of the, like Chris was saying, proximity to the city and so forth. You know, we don't really see any retail commercial along there, because you're not, you don't really wanna drive any more traffic in that area. It's already kind of a through area to some extent, but certainly other types of commercial businesses or industrial and residential in there could work.
And like, even a good example is the one, uh, special use permit that's being reviewed right now, uh, on Boone, the corner of Boone and Woodmere, where that's zoned industrial, uh, but it's also a really small site, like, it's not what we traditionally call. And like, proposed use is really just like a small business, it's not, uh, very intensive type of industrial, but just like logically seems to make sense at that particular location. So if there's something that allows for that, uh, kinda throughout this corridor, looking at what makes sense here, um.
Well, if you wanted to keep some of that commercial and put residential upstairs, or.
Or, yeah, do a second floor, yeah.
Things, if we could allow more of that kind of thing.
Yeah, like upper, upper-floor residential.
Yeah, if you're gonna do commercial anyway, make use of the land.
Mm-hmm.
Any other thoughts on that one? Kinda area in there? Can move on to Borben Valley?
Yeah, we'll kinda alternate these, just, uh, also, if people have ideas on, we drew these up and just kind of drafted, uh, for, for purpose of making a map, I kind of drew them as hard boundaries, but these, like, the, uh, like, the road one could be a bubble one, or if we needed more refine some of these, or kinda define them differently, if people have thoughts on any of these, um, let us know. Borben Valley, we wanted to just kind of define the area around the river, uh, which is pretty much primarily parkland, and, uh, we want to obviously keep that, um, but also recognize the impacts that, uh, might, uh, affect that area. Uh, for one, the Hartman-Hammond Bridge, uh, would provide both some challenges, but also potentially opportunities. Um, if it has non-motorized connections both on it, and then down from it into the valley, uh, potentially to one or both of the parks, um, potentially a better, uh, driveway access to our park, but otherwise. Potentially a better driveway access to our park, but otherwise to just sort of recognize that that is the river valley and to maintain it as such.
Yeah, Buffalo Ridge is kind of that area, it's number three, it's kind of over the Buffalo Ridge Plaza. It's basically the area along Silver Lake Road, kind of on the whole east side of that. We have the Buffalo Ridge Trail, which kind of starts down there at the corner Frankie and Silver Lake and kind of goes up by the middle school, kind of heading down towards the Y in that particular area. This area we see is kind of really focused on non-motorized connections, kind of the backbone tying some of the residential areas to the park. We got the Kids Creek Park in there, we also have the schools that are located in there as well. And so the non-motorized really kind of provides a unique connection.
The Garfield Center, this is one, we were just talking about how to split these up. We were going back and forth between splitting this up into two. It's presented as one in here, but potentially splitting it into two, one focused more on US 31 and one more like the crossings mall area as like a more center, like more of a center in a corridor. But it's the main commercial area of town, just sort of making an observation that it's had a lot of recent turnover, but there's not currently a lot of vacancies, it's shown kind of some resiliency in that sense. But sort of knowing, we did a subarea plan on the other side of town, kind of centered on one mall and what to happen if the same challenges face the other mall. And to also emphasize the potential for non-motorized connections. There's trail in the area, but not just connecting those trails, but also connecting them to buildings and having bike parking to help increase the functionality of the non-motorized system. And then access management along 31 and South Airport for the same reasons and similar reasons.
You know, we called this one Garfield Center, it really could potentially be the center of Garfield in terms of like a town center or village center or kind of like our downtown potentially, particularly if, for the repurposing reuse of the Grand Traverse Mall to work. Or, I mean, right now it has the same zoning as the Cherryland Center, so you could incorporate multifamily in there. There's recreation or entertainment types of options that are in there, a lot more than what it is as a kind of traditional interior mall. So that could be kind of a center point there. Certainly, there's a lot of redevelopment opportunities building out the land itself. It's certainly at an important crossroads, not just within Garfield, but within our region here. And it has the potential to go, you know, not just reuse of buildings, but reconfiguration of buildings, the ability to go upwards, increase in height and so forth in that particular area. And certainly incorporate elements like, like you mentioned, like residential in there as well. Lafranier Hill is really just kind of that area that's just kind of going crazy right now. By recognizing that that's an important neighborhood that's really being created there. Can't remember though, when I last went through that particular area, but when you think of the number of dwelling units in that area, it's got to be around five or 6,000 people once it's all built out. So it's a, it's a significant area and certainly one we want to be mindful of in terms of those people living in that area and how it's connected. So we've talked about ideas of, maybe there's a way to have a connection, you know, between like Lafranier and Garfield so that it alleviates some of the potential congestion in that area. We do know that the county is going through a master plan process right now of their facilities. And we certainly want to make sure that the build out of that campus works in a way that benefits that particular area and works in concert with this particular land use pattern.
McCray Hill, kind of the area between where McCray Hill Road connects to US 31 on both ends. There's some office uses that are existing there on kind of the northern end. There's agriculture on either side, as we've talked about before, among playing commissioners, and we've seen that old turnout come before, the strong desire to maintain the view shed. This is going to have impacts if Hartman Hammond were to go in, kind of where it connects as road commission works on that project. So how to maintain that view shed as that happen and what are the other ramifications? Where exactly does it go in? Do they in the further future try to connect over to East Silver Lake Drive? That's sort of been an idea tossed around, is that, how much is that holding water at the moment? And just the challenge of providing a non-motorized route through this area. We've kind of got a system closer into the center of town, and then there's other pieces going in at the top of the hill, like in front of the Olson Property, some of the newer developments up there having trails and part of the non-motorized. But kind of how to connect them is somewhat of a challenge.
Yeah, in a way, I kind of look at this area ideally is kind of similar to the Boardman Valley type one. I mean, certainly the view shed there and the, it provides a good buffer kind of between the development down towards Rennie School Road and that particular area by the Olson Foundation property. And then our commercial area down South Airport, kind of going north to the city. It does provide a good break in that particular area. And I think there's at least interest to at least keep the corridor to look and feel kind of as natural as possible. So it kind of has that similar kind of qualities of trying to have some preservation aspects to it. Fortunately, we have, we don't have a lot of interest in developing that. We have one primary property owner that isn't interested in developing in that, at least right now. So it's able to keep that, but there is going to be potential at some point there. So how we want to go about protecting that and ensuring that that kind of stays the same is going to be important. So we want to kind of lend some added value to that particular area. The kind of wide open palette is, space is the northwest part of Garfield. So if we go up into the area north of the high school, we have a water tank up there. We have some water main that's been now going down Cedar Run Road out towards Long Lake. The northwest part of the township is, right now is kind of planned for agriculture. But we're seeing less agricultural activity out there and probably more opportunity for probably some low-density residential there. But there could be some areas that we want to see, maybe some, you know, patterns of residential in there that will fit and maybe keep some of that agriculture in there, or maybe it's more thought of that it is kind of turning more towards a residential area. So I don't know what thoughts are on that. We do know when we met with Long Lake Township on the west side of Gray Road, there's, you know, plans. You see some apartments going up there, they have plans for some commercial. I mean, I don't see us putting apartments up there or commercial land, but maybe there is an opportunity for that. But I don't necessarily see it that way. I do see kind of more low-density residential in that particular area, but I don't know what thoughts. We do have some major parks up there with the Hickory Properties and so forth, so it is a very attractive area. We got the golf course up there as well.
Joe, what's your sense? I mean, I feel like you would have the best sense of, Joe Robertson, sorry. How, what, how much farming's going on as far as that being an agriculturally master-planned area up there?
On 72, they're still farming that and that's about it. There's about two, two or three farms along, right on, that would be our north township line.
Right on the
Right on M 72.
Which is actually opposite Gray Road where they're building apartments
Yes.
in the township.
Them are about the only ones that I can think of that they're farming in that area. Gallagher's and stuff are back over here, they're really out of that.
Yeah, they're kind of in the center. It's interesting because you think about, this is going to seem a little strange, but this area I can almost see like the Wayne Hill. I mean, there's a lot of desire for that area that's up on Wayne Hill or whatever, that's in the township but right across the street from the city. Okay, they want to live, they want to live there, it's a lot cheaper, and they compute it into the city. You think about this as a residential area and how quick a commute is into Traverse City from this area and out with 72. It's a natural area for residential and it could be the next Boone area for a single family. You know, as, if we see a flow back to single family and the demand and the desire and the ability to develop single family, R1 and kind of thing, this could be an area that could be, Boone, and you talk about location, location, location. It's, it's in the right spot if you want to, if you're working in Traverse City but don't want to live in Traverse City, probably not a better potential area. So I don't, I don't think it's, I don't think that property's future is in agricultural, I don't think so. I mean, as much as I'd love it to be, I don't, I don't see that. Quite frankly, there's not a lot of Garfield Township in general that's going to be agricultural for many more years. It's just, it's just not feasible with the land values and things that are going on, so.
And with the density on the other side of Gray Road, would we want to maybe offer an opportunity for smaller lot, smaller single-family home lots rather, or maybe even the duplex, like the R2 opportunity? So that you get that transition from the apartments on the west side of Gray Road to a little bit more density on the east side of the Gray Road to single-family homes as you get closer to Traverse City?
Where's our water and sewer in relationship to that?
So the sewer comes up to Greyhawk there right now and pretty much stops about there, so a little bit up Cedar Run. And then the water basically is kind of along Harris Road there and goes out towards Cedar Run to the west to Long Lake Township.
With the lay of the land, that water could service all that pretty much.
Yeah.
The sewer that I think is the struggle, well, it could all run towards the town, but there's no, there's no sewer up there as of now.
Right, right.
It's just a matter of putting it in though, it flows downhill.
It would work, right.
Yeah, there's the, there's a relatively new water tank that's up there, so that, that particular area is going to be well-served by water. Sewer, we definitely have the topo there for it, but it's about what's going to bring it up that hill. There's that, some of those hills are pretty challenging. I know Traverse City Light and Power has a significant property on the north side of Cedar Run. But it's got
They had the spoils on it, didn't they, from years ago?
Yeah, it's got ash piles on it, coal ash piles, which are probably not going to be removed. So it's kind of limits the amount of available buildable property there. But a project that potentially could go there could extend the sewer a little bit farther up Cedar Run, getting it farther up towards kind of the top of the hill. So we could see those types of projects would probably have to happen in order to kind of really make that go.
Well, we've been kind of looking for a tiny house area, maybe. If there's enough open space out there and there's water and sewer, maybe there's a section in there where we could make that available to people.
The best, the area that we, that would probably serve that is going to be down kind of where the Harris Hills Site condo. Because that rate, that extension of Zimmerman, the water goes right past it, goes from Zimmerman, you know, along Harris. The sewer is right there at the very end of Zimmerman. So that has that, and that kind of lends itself more towards the smaller homes in that whole particular area. So I would say that kind of area, kind of north side of North Long Lake Road going towards Harris in that particular area could easily be served by water and sewer. Kind of where that's kind of shaded with the B node, which is their Brookside Commons node. Kind of the north end of that and kind of going over a little bit into that seven district, the Northwest Garfield District. Is that definitely could be served easily by water sewer?
Well, transportation's good from there and there's, you know, positives.
Yeah, I mean, you could potentially, you know, walk to school there, you know, walking, you know, we already know that there are students that are walking to the high school and so forth, so it's got a lot of, you know, closeness to different areas, places. You know, that node, the Brookside Commons, that PUD there does have a provision to allow for some amount of like neighborhood commercial that could be established in there as well, so that makes it nice and convenient for people that might be living in that area.
Yeah, let's do, so Rennie Hill, which is actually the name for around Veterans Drive. This we discovered was an older name, there used to be an airport over here and it was a Rennie Hill Airport.
Right behind the subdivision.
Yes, over that way.
It used to be Rennie Street at one time.
What was the highway, the original highway in town? This was the highway.
Yeah, that's why it was concrete base on the, because there was a highway. Yeah, so
So if we find a name that's kind of historic or whatever, we're trying to bring that back and help to identify these districts? It kind of creates some authenticity and some integrity?
What was that airport called, I wonder?
Well, he said Rennie.
Rennie Airport, Rennie Hill Airport, something like that.
Well, there was a, wasn't there a Rennie Hill, like a ski hill or sliding hill?
Oh, was that the sledding hill?
I thought it was a ski hill.
Oh, okay.
I don't remember that.
So we have some pretty cool photos of the airport.
Right.
Like the 1920s and 30s.
And that was where the cemetery is now, right?
I believe so, yeah.
Yeah, I believe so.
They're even behind it, behind, it used to be up right behind the subdivision, it used to be a football field up there, St. Francis.
Yeah, they come there and practice.
That's about where the airport was, was where that football field.
That would make sense, okay.
But that's been along.
Yeah, if there's a historic name to kind of use that or to, otherwise, we pretty much created names. At some point, we were trying to go for seven hills like Rome and have the seven hills of Garfield, so. If you have better names for any of these, please let us know, that goes for the public as well. We're just trying to identify something for planning purposes and put it in here. But for Rennie Hill, for veterans, this is actually one where we had a rezoning a couple of years ago. And we looked at our future land use map, it was like the corridor has both single-family and office in it, both in terms of future land use and then the existing use. So it's kind of got a different mix, but it's, so it's mixed use, but maybe like a less intensive mixed use. Does it make sense to kind of create some kind of mixed use designation for that? Or just sort of allow like the, you've got a mix of single-family and office, it seems to work together. Mostly because there's no retail on this street, it's, it's pretty much strictly office and single-family. And then actually, we should say, some institutional uses, namely Township Hall and the fire station. But the only things other than that, both in terms of the kind of transportation aspects, kind of relating to how the street looks in the city side. There's both bike lanes and sidewalks and to have that kind of connect on both sides. I think the only sidewalk here is the one in front of Township Hall, and I believe road commission was going to do at least a wide shoulder. I don't know if it's going to be marked as such for a bike lane, but it's something that's usable to sort of emphasize that as a, as a connection to other parts of the, other parts of the township and back down the hill to the city.
Anybody else remember when the school bus garage used to be down here?
Oh, they were down here too, okay.
That was in the city side or?
No, it was right down the left, yeah, right on the left-hand side, these are going down Veterans Drive. That's where the Traverse City School Bus Depot was. They wouldn't fit there now. Traverse City School Bus Depot was. They wouldn't fit there now, so. Certainly a lot of different uses within that Rennie Hill District. I mean, you think about what's up here on Veterans Drive here versus the housing, versus the apartments. Are the apartments down here mostly in the city or are they in township?
Yeah, down the hill are mostly involved in the city.
Down the hill, yeah. I think it's roughly where the construction is right now, is roughly where the city Township Line is.
Yeah, the houses from that subdivision, I think, on the north side of that subdivision.
So everything on that side, yeah, the city side. But then we have the apartments over on our side too, which are the Harbor, Harbor Drive? Behind us this way, yeah.
Moving kind of farther south to what we call the Rennie Plains area. Down by thirty-one and Rennie School, we got Elmers and industrial uses on the east side. Which we foresee kind of continuing on, but certainly we've talked about the west side where the Olson Foundation property is. And kind of looking at this particular area, particularly when we are building out some of our industrial areas. That there is a need for, to provide some business parks and so forth that are planned out. That provide, allow places for different commercial and industrial uses to go in and operate. Also potentially still providing some residential development in multifamily. Was kind of thrown out conceptually, is probably on, at least a portion of that is a possibility, although it's not necessarily cast in stone at this time. But this is an area that would require some extension of utilities and so forth. Water services needed in this area. And also, we looking, we're looking at this area from really building an appropriate street network. So on the, the east side, you got kind of this variety of how, roads and streets connecting through there. On the west side, there really isn't anything at this time. We'd like to see some type of road connection between Meadow Lane and. School Road, you know, going north and south, running parallel to thirty-one. And then some connection from Rennie School over to, excuse me, between that connection going over towards. Blue Star Drive, kind of connecting that over, so.
Is there any more talking with Olsons on what they've brought to us in the winter?
They've, they've had some, they're still working on it, but nothing definitive at this time, so.
Just kind of defining the area around Silver Lake, which, or the areas directly around the lake. Have a pretty well-established residential, but so noting that we've talked about in the past. Water quality of the lake and the potential of, if there's any of the failing septic systems. Does it make sense to look at potential fewer sewer connection? And if so, where does that come from? And that, in some of the other areas that we kind of draft defined. That also affects, is that, if it's coming from one direction or the other, if that's feasible in those areas as well. And then making some non-motorized connections, which we've identified in Parks and Rec Plan. Connecting the Silver, Silver Lake Rec area loop either to Buffalo Ridge. Or going east through the Hyde Property, out to the Mall Trail.
And I think our, at least our, one of our, I don't know, we got another. Yeah, Spring Hill, kind of the district down, I mean, we don't really see much change out in this particular area. Probably the only thing that we looked at a couple of times was kind of that southeast corner of Garfield and Emerson, is potential residential development. What's really kind of, this is kind of a really nice area, nice entryway into Garfield, nice rolling topography. There's a lot of, obviously a lot of traffic going down Garfield, connecting Kingsley to the city and so forth. And without having really kind of utilities extending into this area, don't see a lot of change at this time, but that obviously could change. But this is still, has some agricultural areas in there. But like I said, it's kind of limited towards what can potentially happen here with, unless there's some improvements made to water and sewer.
Yeah, right now, this is a little further beyond the existing water and sewer. And this is one where, you know, we don't have a lot of agricultural. Although. This one may sort of make sense as a more rural area, transition into other rural areas in the region. One thing we haven't talked about as much is, does it make sense? Some of the different, there's a kind of a broad category of things under like the agribusiness or value-added agriculture. Other things you can do on an agricultural site that help like support the agricultural business. We had, had some broad inquiries on that, we didn't have any kind of formal proposals for that. But we had sort of some broad inquiries in that area on kind of what's feasible, does that make sense for that area?
So that's kind of it for the districts. We next have a few nodes that we kind of want to run through. And these are intended to be a little bit smaller areas. We have Ashland Park, which is essentially a P U D. Not a lot of activity going in there right now. So we still think there's a great potential in there, particularly for the non-residential areas. Maybe there could be something like a small market there. We think it's a, is a prime piece of property, it's a really nice, beautiful property where you can see across the valley all the way over to Copper Ridge. So it's something that we think is an important node there to really kind of serve that kind of whole area of the township. At least for the residents that are in that particular area. We have B, which is, we talked a little bit earlier, that's Brookside Commons, that's Zimmerman, North Long Lake Road, that particular area. Like I mentioned, the Brookside Commons P U D has a, a commercial component, which could provide some immediate kind of neighborhood services. For the people that are in that area. Certainly the new investment that's been going in there in terms of some of the senior living and so forth. Kind of creates a little bit higher density, that little bit more formalized area when you look at what's going on with Meadow Valley. I think kind of works in well with some of the uses there in terms of the schools and some of the office uses in there. Probably the one that we're really looking at as well is the Cedar Run Campus, which is the C area. That's the one we're trying to figure out. We've had a lot of interest for, not a lot of interest, we've had some interest for multifamily in there. We're trying to be mindful that this is still a medical campus area generally, because of its proximity to Munson. But certainly the walkability in that area and its integration with the city is definitely be lifted up. Certainly with the Olson P U D that just was approved in terms of the amendment incorporating some residential uses in there. Starting to create some of the added walking infrastructure. Any thoughts on this one? I think it would be helpful to us, but we think it could have a little bit more focus. Some of the guiding development principles in there would maybe create some better direction to that particularly. This is an area where we think there could be some type of a different zoning that might mix that a little bit better. Maybe allowing, encouraging a little bit more residential, maybe above or in the back of properties. Ideally, we'd have some connections in there as well that might, there's a lot of traffic flowing through that area. If we can have some, maybe some internal connections might work out as well.
Maybe elimination of a certain stop sign? I wouldn't, I mean, I live around there. I don't think that, I would encourage some increased height in that area. I don't think that we would notice. As part of that mix, some more residential, a little higher up. I don't know how many stories or what kind of height we'd be talking about, but.
You already have.
You got the hospital right close by.
I was gonna say, the hospital is a very large, not only is it tall, but it's, it's massing is significant, and it's gonna continue to grow.
And, and then you have the hill and the ridge behind that area, as you go up Cedar Run and North Long Lake. That would tend, you know, that line of sight past those buildings, you're still gonna see the hill above it. And I think, I see it as an area very much like the first area we started talking about, the Barlow Garfield. It being directly adjacent to the city and offering opportunities for new development. That is based on, or benefits from that direct connectivity to the city.
And mixes with what they've got there.
Well, it's, it's hard to, it's hard to see on this map, because there's not a lot of detail, but I'm envisioning, there's not a lot of vacant land there. So you probably talk about a lot of redevelopment, you know, which would be, I don't know what all is available. Because that, I think that if I understand, you're encompassing the, those medical campuses. All those, you know, eye doctor offices and clinics and everything that's in that west front street hill there. That's, you know, that's, I don't think that's probably gonna change much, so. But to your point, if you can, you know, redevelop some ground floor businesses, some housing above it or behind it or adjacent to it. Again, probably a lot of, similar, we talked about up on the hill or on the Wayne Hill area, there's probably a lot of desire to be there. Versus on the other side of the street.
And kind of case in point, the one P U D that is mixed use in there, the Olson P U D came in. And is gonna do the apartments, which is in place of some of the office, but yeah, they're gonna have ground floor commercial and up for it. So yeah, does that make sense kind of throughout that area?
And by no means would I want to, like, for example, concrete services, you know, great business, great business in our community. But I would have to imagine that at some point, the value of that land starts to exceed their use of it. And perhaps, you know, they might consider relocating somewhere and benefiting from, if, if we provide value for that land for. I mean, I'll come around and say it, I mean, you know, making concrete blocks in that location probably isn't the best use directly adjacent to the city.
The loan supplies are pretty high right now.
I don't begrudge them anything, other than that, that's, you know, it would potentially be, were they not there. It would be potentially be great residential, a great place to live.
There'd be a tipping point.
And, and all we can do is, you know, through our planning, to create that incentive so that they get the best value. Should they ever decide to.
I believe it is zoned industrial.
Future, I think, is not currently, whatever that area.
The triangle piece of industrial there would have to be their piece, right?
Well, yeah, they have this, the piece on the south side of, or down the other side of Front Street too.
Commercial, that's where they have their.
But yeah, and I think it's about ten acres, so that's a lot of land. But yeah, I mean, we're, we're just trying to set the stage for the future and realizing that some improvements in this. We have some of the, the offices that are going, that are in that particular area are putting in some sidewalks. So that's kind of, you know, more of a, kind of a connection to the, to the city and so forth, makes a lot of sense. Certainly good access to a grocery store that's there provides a, a nice resource for residents in there as well.
Walkability to the city itself and downtown. Bikeability at least.
I'll just kind of go through these last three. We have the Hyde Property or the, was formerly owned by the.
You skipped Copper Ridge, but I don't.
Oh, Copper Ridge, yes.
A lot of well-established.
Yeah, that was pretty well clear cut what that's gonna be.
But there are some buildings that aren't built yet.
Yeah, that's, we've had, we've talked with developers on that, some ones, some that have not been built out as offices. Could potentially be built out as residential, whether it's rental or condos.
Residential component to Copper Ridge.
Correct. What I'd like to do is if they go down that track, is we could really probably do a refresh on that P U D. And in terms of getting a updated site development plan for the entire site. Because there is some changeover in those buildings, and we want to make sure they got a lot of flexibility in what they can do. But certainly in some of those buildings that were thought to be offices could be residential and could provide some. Particularly for medical staff could reside there and so forth. So, but it's not quite built out, it, it's getting pretty close and, and we expect that to happen near future. The Hyde Property or the property behind Sam's Club is about two hundred acres and with, with the potential, looking at some additional properties in there. Certainly to us is another area that has a lot of potential. It does need to have water and sewer extended to that. There isn't water and sewer going down South Airport at that point, but there is nearby. We see a potential for some connections, for instance, motorized connections potentially from South Airport to Silver Lake Road. Certainly non-motorized connections in there. Primarily, we're looking at this area as residential, single-family residential. Maybe some townhomes in there right behind Sam's Club. But it's right now zoned R one, so has the potential to be a, a nice development area. Green Hill, which is right kind of near there, that's the intersection of Zimmerman and Silver Lake. Just kind of creating a nice, there, you know, certainly there's some businesses there that create some services. We want to make sure that those are enhanced and provide, alleviates people from having to make longer trips. If they can get some of their needs met right here in their local commercial. We have had interest in a gas station on the southwest corner of that. Where the, kind of the old barn is located, there's about a five-acre parcel there. Right now, it's, I'm, let's see, noting on that, it's zoned agriculture, so would require some type of a zoning change there. But I don't know if that's necessarily appropriate or not. One of the challenges in that, that node is that intersection is not an easy intersection. It's pretty tight. You got some great changes in there, so.
It'd be a nice spot for sort of a town center, for a lot of people go there from Silver Lake. From the subdivisions that are all around there. If there's a way to expand that and, you know, have some more services. I think right now, it's just the four lots that are on the corners.
Used to be a gas station on the northeast corner, you know, so it'll be, almost be. The Green Hill Grocery used to have gas there for years, and so.
We talked about that ten or quarter of a few years ago, but that one parcel, that we figured it would be too much traffic. And that's what, that's why it's not, the other two were local commercial, right? And then that hardware is not, is agriculture, it's just there because of the P U D.
I think it's part of the P U D, yeah.
That's the lag, and so, and then that's why the other corner was, was thought to, that should stay that way. Because it would be too much of a traffic hazard.
Yeah, that's one thing, we were thinking of maybe having a conversation with the Road Commission too about that. Just to, you know, see what their concerns are about that. But yeah, that's, that would be our concern about that corner, just because of its shape and then also the topography in there make it really difficult to access.
Well, maybe work with them for a different way to get through there. I mean, you come kind of off this corner here, if you're making a left, you can't see past the road traffic, I mean, it's.
Yeah, so I mean, we don't really want to add more to that without understanding what the ramifications.
Without them making changes. I know they just did it, but it's weird, you know.
It's bad. Just coming up that and trying to make a right on East Silver Lake, it's a here and then turn.
Oh, yeah, that little pin.
Problem there is too, that Francisco's that, everybody's trying to turn in there and going across south and then stopping the traffic. Because there's stopped left.
They stack up in that left turn lane, you know, the people that are coming north out of East Silver Lake Road, go to the left turn lane. And you, they come whipping around that corner and get in that lane right there, and they can't get through because there's a line of traffic.
And then just the one that we kind of. And then just the one that, we kind of go all over the map is that Logan's Landing, so just in terms of that general area, um, has a lot of potential, certainly now with the Boardman Lake Loop being completed. We've had quite a few inquiries, at least for the property on the east side, which isn't very big. I think it's only like an acre or so, uh, where the jewelry store is located. It's, I think the township's opinion on that has been kind of like, if somebody comes in with a, with a plan for both sides of that development, then we could maybe consider doing a P U D on that. I think total compromise, it comprises about six acres, is it even that much, not even?
In terms of what's usable, there's also like the setback from the lake and river, which kind of limits what's buildable in that area. It's, it's a challenging area.
Could you go right over, if you use the existing, they're right on the river.
Right.
They use the existing part.
Footprint.
That's on the river, they wouldn't need to do the setbacks, would they?
It's a good question, um.
Well, so the buildings are non-conforming right now, so if you, you can't really add to it. You can improve them and so forth, but you can't necessarily like go in there and totally redo them, even if it's on that same footprint.
You could add to it by taking all those outside walls off and add to what's existing along the river.
I think what you guys are saying though is that if you were to redevelop it, you'd have to meet setbacks on the river.
Yeah.
And I'd rather, I think you're right, I, I think that maybe we need to create an opportunity for some kind of exception where a riverfront development continues in some way and it's somehow special because it just should be.
Well, yeah, I mean, we, we thought if you applied the P U D approach to that, would give you a lot of flexibility. Our only stipulation is on that it would have to be both sides of the river at the same time.
Is it all one property owner?
It's two different property owners.
Yep.
So, uh, because it just seems, in, in what we, we thought of, so P, cause the P U D, you're supposed to have a minimum of twenty acres, but there are some conditions in there that does allow the township to do something smaller and we thought it could probably fit it in terms of it's a unique location and, and so forth, that probably could warrant a, uh, a smaller P U D on that particular site. The public benefit would be certainly some interaction of some type of, uh, with the trail and so forth to have some type of public space, like for instance, it could be a restaurant with outdoor seating or something like that. So that people could enjoy that particular area that would have, you know, so that it's not just, let's say, redeveloped solely for residential condos or something like that. So, we think that there's, if we could get both sides together, there could be some redevelopment there that we could work with, uh.
Would we accommodate some height in order to make that, that opportunity more desirable?
Yep.
Cause I think your idea of a, I mean, I'm thinking like one of the, the bayfront condominiums in East Bay Township. And then a restaurant on the bottom floor, a restaurant on the top floor, and it becomes a destination to ride, you know, to ride or walk to on the Boardman Loop Trail, or, or live there and ride or walk from it.
It has some challenges, there are some floodplain areas in there as well, so some of that, for instance, a lot of the county park, Medali Park is in floodplain, um, but like part of Logan's Landing is not, it's like, it's just enough above floodplain, certainly, yeah, so it's, uh, it's, cause why I can see that being redeveloped in a way that creates kind of a destination type place, I can also see it being restored back to something natural and being more of like a, a, a park atmosphere. That would be a total different approach, uh, particularly when we look at replacement of those culverts. You know, there has been some discussion where the road commission is talking about building a bridge, uh, kind of maybe some talk about restoring the original course of the river to the east side. Those concepts there kind of lend itself to maybe look at it completely differently, so. But at this point, we have had some interest in, in, uh, in those properties, but I think some of the complexity of them, and it doesn't have necessarily to do with the zoning on it, it's just got, it's got some other complexities. But I think we're willing to work with the properties and get a, you know, a quality design that fits in for that area.
If there's anywhere that is particularly unique, given how many different complexities, this is kind of that note. But it's definitely a big focal point to have an east-west crossing, a major trail loop that's going to connect to a lot of things as we build out more of the non-motorized plan, like this is, this is like a community focal point, this could be where Garfield Days is hosted in the future when we create that. This would be the community focal area.
We, we definitely wanna take a look, uh, at our zoning in that particular area, it's a lot of general commercial. All the way through the south side as well, where you have all those office buildings. We had an inquiry about a, a car wash in that area. So, I'm not sure that, I mean, that's a, that has a, that's a permitted use in the C G, granted, I think it's a S U P, but, uh, I think we should be thinking about how it's currently zoned and maybe thinking, you know, this gets back to maybe some of those mixed use districts that we've talked of that might be customized for some more of these areas that, have, still have commercial elements, but don't have the intensity of some of those really auto-oriented type of uses that could be disruptive. I think we got other areas that would be much better suited for things like a car wash. I would say we, maybe we could.
Yeah, the only thing, really, if you wanna touch on your corridors.
Yeah, we did talk a little bit about corridors.
Kind of touched on them already through the conversation on the nodes, but that's a good conversation, that's good, good work.
Yeah, the corridors, we mostly had, uh, we put them in the context of a master street plan, so this is, it's in the Planning Enabling Act, talks about, um, master street plan, I think in the context of like a city, uh, that owns streets, it might actually deal more with, um, that particular function and actually the operation of, uh, managing streets. In our case though, uh, working with entities like M D, and the road commission, uh, or, uh, private, uh, street, uh, in condos. But seeing like how does the street system work and then kind of planning for corridors, a lot of these, um, either have, um, like in the instance of Cast Road, it's pretty well established industrial, um, but in the case of something like Hartman Hammond, it's acknowledged that road commission's working on a project to connect these. We are actively already doing the access management every time we've seen something, um, like Vilge Garfield, we're reviewing right now, to not have access to, uh, Hammond, uh, Beta only had the one access, uh, to Hammond. When the Hyde Breder went in, it's just the entry into the park, but none of the other things have access to Hammond. And to limit the commercial line as well, like we've talked before, don't want it to become another South Airport, want it to be different. So, just acknowledge that as like a corridor, uh, part of that corridor, South Airport itself. We talked about access management and reduction of the driveways, uh, kind of as a very conceptual, high level thing, but if we have that opportunity, if things come up and we're able to, uh, make that operate more safely, to acknowledge that we would support that, but obviously coordinate with road commission and private property owners as those come up. And US thirty-one, uh, aside from the same thing, access management, reduction of driveways, uh, we also, as we are naming, uh, uh, trying to come up with draft names of nodes and districts, uh, draft names of corridors. We tossed around the name Southview Parkway, um, as a kind of Parkway entrance into the, uh, the metro area. But, um, thinking about like branding, uh, as just something like, if that's something the township were interested in, that is a tool that a lot of places use to kind of identify. Even in East Bay right now, it's like they have the beach district and there's like, uh, not bollards, the, um, not flyers, the banners, banners, uh, kind of identifying like where you're at and it's sort of like, oh, this is a place I'm arriving to.
Just go downtown, you got, you got Slab Town, you got Downtown, you got Old Town, you got.
Yeah.
Nobo, I didn't, I didn't know what the heck Nobo was, till I had somebody telling me it's North Boardman, okay, so. You know, they're, they've, you know, I don't know if those names were created by staff or the citizens or whatever, I mean, some of them are old. You know, some in our township people wouldn't wanna use, like Pigpen Alley, you know, those kind of the ones that, you know, were, are.
It's a historic one we may not wanna use.
Historical and they're, they're old, but you probably don't wanna use them anymore, but, um, so, you know, maybe we, at that point, if we do, you know, get to that point, we, we solicit some ideas from the citizens and, you know, what we might be on call, so.
Yeah, yeah, we don't have to use them at all, but it's a, it's a tool that's out there if we wanna use them, so.
It's a good way to approach and tie it into the master plan too, cause you, to identify those areas, cause that, and then it does allow us to specifically identify maybe some zoning, some, some uses, some allowed uses, some not allowed uses in those specific districts that'll allow us to pinpoint.
Well, and why is this different than that?
Yeah.
We wanted to kind of use, uh, these designations to really to point out some of the uni- unique areas. So, for instance, like Logan's Landing, if you look at our future land use map and our zoning and so forth, that's all that we have, but we know there's some qualities about it, why, because it's on the river right there. You got South Airport Road, there's some, you know, it's at the south end of the lake, it's a little unique. So, there, we wanted to, you know, call it out, apply some, a different, uh, development principles that are very specific to that area. So that when you get a development proposal for that, and we will see at some point some redevelopment of that location, we can say, yeah, the future land use designation is this, the zoning is this, but there's also these other guiding principles that, you know, we wanna see something a little extra special here, we don't want, you know, we want something unique that's gonna serve the community in this way.
I love what we've done at the, the Collins, we're, we're building, we're building envelopes specific on some of our requirements, some things that are allowed. So, you can pinpoint it down to an envelope of a building and say, this is allowed here, but it's not allowed here, and why, and why it makes sense, so. It's good, thanks guys, appreciate that.
Thank you.
I think that takes us to our next public comment, our public is shaking her head no, so we're gonna go on from public comment. Other business, I don't see anything, um, I don't wanna drag this out, or, you know, I know that Bob's over there ready to move to adjourn and I'm not, no. But can you check out the site, the site plan that we approved for Meyer's reconstruction and redevelopment? Was part of that site plan for them to block off that driveway on the north side of the building? Cause it's gated, and you, that, the driveway that's been there for a hundred years, long as, ever since Meyer was built, is now a gate, it's blocked off, it's.
On the Frankie side.
Have to go around the car wash, you have to go around the car wash to go.
Well, for a while, you, you, yeah, well, now you have to go around the car wash, but, you know, it's, it's actually gated and like a gate there, it's locked, I don't know if it's emergency access only, no. I just don't remember that being on a site plan, would that have been something?
That's in the city, right? Where's the city start there?
No, it's all in Garfield.
Well, this.
City's right there.
Yeah, the city's, I think.
It might be like right where it is.
That one in parking lot is a city parking lot.
I'm pretty sure.
He's parked on.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure the.
Building, is the building.
That drive, I think, is the, the dividing line between the city and the township. Is it not?
If it's not as close, yeah.
That's north.
Over the car wash in it?
Yes, that's all.
The car wash definitely is in the city.
That's definitely city, yeah.
I think everything, even that.
You're literally talking.
Car wash and Meyer, I think is.
Fifteen feet from the building.
Yeah, it's right, it's the line, I think.
I think that, that driveway to the back is the line between the city and the township, pretty sure.
But would that have been on our site plan as part of our review or not?
Yeah.
Okay, so, can you check and see if they showed that as being removed? It's not open, and yeah, you can go through that parking lot into the city and get out, but that driveway was, is now gated.
It looks like a permanent gate?
Yes.
Okay.
You can check, yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, one of that, you know, one of the big concerns about that too is with Metro Fire's review too, cause they typically like to have access, it's hard to believe they would allow for that.
During construction, they had both ends of it gated because that whole parking lot that's in the city was their supply, it was all fenced and that was all their supplies and everything. And as everything was removed and the fencing and everything, that one gate at Frankie Road would be right across from the Montessori School. Still now a permanent locked gate.
Pretty sure they have not received their final occupancy.
Just, just check on it, I was surprised to, to see that it was blocked and I don't remember us reviewing that, maybe it wasn't part of our review.
Yeah, was it, there was no plans, that would have had, I don't recall, I, I mean.
A lot of the plans zoomed in, in the like kind of front area they were working on, uh, but yeah, Metro Fire would have reviewed access as well, we can check with that and.
Just check on it, I don't wanna drag tonight out anymore than I have.
That's good, no, thanks for noting that, yeah.
You know, we talked a little bit off the record about Sam's and they had that one driveway blocked into the gas station and so on. Now they just, they, they restrike their entire parking lots and all, they, the parking lots are all restriked right up to those islands, so they're literally forcing people to drive through the parking spots to get to the gas station, so. It's too bad we didn't, you know, get it with them, I have no problem with rerouting the driveways and marking them, but the, you know, they've got the, the driveway to the gas station blocked, which forces everybody to just drive through parking spots to get to the drive, you know, the gas station. It's, to me, it's, it, this just creates confusion driving in there.
No way to go.
Yeah, where do you go?
You don't know who has it right away.
Yeah, you're forced to drive across parking spots, you know, and I don't, I think, I think they should be made to open that driveway back up. Or restrike their parking lot, create a driveway, one or the other.
You're talking about Sam's?
Huh?
Sam's.
Sam's Club.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, it, you know, it's, I, I understand what their theory is about blocking that driveway up, but when that was, that site plan, that is the driveway to the gas station.
We can take a look at that as well.
And they've eliminated it, they've dropped, they've blocked, they've got it permanently blocked, and I don't know how you can do that if it's part of your, 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 you know, the site plan number one, but the, the cycle of traffic and just to say.
Now, it's going to be another way to get to Montessori too, and there'll be a lot of traffic going into that school, because you will.
Talking about Meyer or Sam's?
Meyer.
Meyer now, yeah, I'm gonna go back, yeah, you're right, but, but, okay, that's all I have.
Joe, actually, I have another thing too, um, and your question just made me think of it. I think it's right across on the east side of thirty-one from Frankie Road. One of those businesses mowed down all of the, like, area around the, that wetland. And so I'm curious if we have another situation like we've hit, if there's any obligation that they had to not touch that.
Yeah, that's on my list of things to do, I got, we did an inventory, I think there's about seven parcels along there and some of those we gotta go through, like Lake Michigan Credit Union is mowing all the way up to the Kits Creek.
Maybe that's the one I'm thinking of.
Yeah, there's a few in there, um, and it's, uh, that's, I know for certain, we, we've also reviewed the site plans, I know they're supposed to have a buffer. The one that's really done really nice is the MSU Federal Credit Union.
One looked really good.
Looks great.
And it's, uh, I wish I would have took a picture, but I saw a guy out there fishing one time. You know, with the MSU credit union right behind him, you know, and, uh, you know, because when we were dealing, I recall dealing with the Lake Michigan Credit Union and dealing with the engineer who was a downstate engineer and he kept on calling it a drain and I had to remind him that it's a creek with fish in it. So, uh, but that's kind of the attitude, I think, and, and, but we do have, and it's gonna be something we're just gonna have to go through and issue notices to them that those are not supposed to be mowed, they're actually supposed to be natural buffers.
Keeps repeating itself, doesn't it?
Yeah.
Well, yeah.
Maybe we need to do so much as issue, uh, a notice to everybody on that corridor.
That's what we're gonna be doing.
Good.
Yeah.
Great.
Anything else for under other business? Thanks, Chris. Um, items for the next agenda, looks pretty packed.
Three of the things, we're on the last, uh, meeting, the Vilge Garfield, seven sixteen Boone, Ambish's, a couple things that we did get applications for, uh, Durga is the name of an applicant, they're on Hartman, it's one of the, uh, things in between Hartman, or in between like Liv Arbers and Cast Road, there's a couple on the future land use that show, uh, some multifamily in that area.
Followed name, I wondered if it wasn't the Durga on Hartman Road yet.
Yeah, um, and then Portable Storage Solutions is on Cast, that's the, is that the old Pepsi?
Yeah, it's the former, uh, former Pepsi facility, they wanna, uh, have. Yeah, it's the former, uh, former Pepsi facility, they wanna, uh, have shipping container sales in that location there.
Um, and then a sign review, um, which might lead to some broader, uh, review of some things at Cherryland, which we'll talk about next time.
Are they changing their sign again?
Uh, there's an application for a sign.
There's an application.
We'll talk about that more later.